Counselor Bellamy?
Counselor Bellamy?
As always.
All right, I'll call the meeting back to order.
No, definitely not till you want to be here first.
Ms. Rice, could you read the consent agenda, please?
Item I, minutes for May 7th, 2018. Item B, appropriation, transfer of funds from school HVAC operations to school HVAC capital improvement program, $130,000, second of two readings. Item C, appropriation funds for 2018-2019 community development block grant, $389,291.49, second of two readings. Item D, appropriation funds for the 2018-19 home fund, $99,488.45, second of two readings. Item E, appropriation for the community development block grant, reprogramming FY-1819 funds, second of two readings. Item F, appropriation for the home investment partnership account reprogramming FY-1819 funds, second of two readings. Item G, appropriation Spanner program at SPCA, $1,998.52, second of two readings. Item H, appropriation, transfer of funds for the new salt storage facilities, $300,000, second of two readings. Item I, resolution, appointment of the chief of police, first of one reading. Item J, a resolution, regional hazard mitigation plan, first of one reading. Item K, a resolution, reallocation of existing funds for the McIntyre State Park, $150,000, first of one reading. Item L, a resolution, renewal of Sprint franchise agreement, first of one reading. Item M, an ordinance, the tree designation, second of two readings. And item N, an ordinance for the homeowner tax relief grant program for 2018, first of two readings.
Okay, motion?
Move to adopt the consent agenda as read.
Second. All right, vote. It's five oh.
Congratulations.
Thank you, counsel. Congratulations, Chief Ragman.
Congratulations, chief.
Congratulations.
You're here now.
All right, so next we have the public hearing for the police civilian review board. Mr. Jones will present.
Thank you, Mayor Walker. Late last year, the city council voted to form an independent police civilian review board. In order to provide for the board's operation as a truly independent entity, council supported tasking the initial board with drafting bylaws and defining their mission. The council resolution forming an initial police civilian review board reflected the intent of the city council that the board shall explore and outline their charge, including the ability to work with local law enforcement to address and investigate community complaints and engage in a community-focused process that regularly involves all segments of the public, inclusive of the city's minority and low-wealth communities. The city has conducted an open application process, including opportunities for input at regular city council meetings and a public civilian review board community forum, which was held at the Jefferson School on April 24th. Of the 25 initial applications received, council selected the 17 applicants who are city residents to participate in the community forum and to go further along in the review process. A total of 12 applicants attended the forum, with five applicants electing to withdraw themselves from consideration before the forum occurred. More information, including a link to a feedback survey that was created, which closes on May 24th, may be found at charlottesville.org/boards. That is another opportunity for folks to comment on the civilian review board candidates before council makes a decision at its next meeting on June 14th. Tonight, as you mentioned, we do have a public hearing on this. The initial board will have seven members for council to appoint. Each of them will be appointed to a one-year term. In following council's appointments to this initial board, the board will convene in public meetings and engage the community for a period of approximately six months, after which they will provide a written report with proposed mission and draft bylaws for council's consideration by no later than nine months after the appointments have been made. And with that, I will turn it over to the council for the public hearing.
All right, so I open the public hearing. So first, Jim Shea.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jim Shea. I live in Fry Spring. Counselors, our city is in crisis, and ironically, it's a crisis brought about by the behavior of our own police department. The first of two main elements of this crisis was evident last summer, especially on August 12th, the day that we were famously invaded by hundreds of right-wing racist thugs, who told us weeks before they got here that they wanted to cause turmoil and havoc, and they threatened black people and Jews in our city. But when they got here, our police department stood aside and left the city to the tender mercies of these hooligans, with results that were tragic and grievous, as we know. And if they weren't worse, that's no thanks to the Charlottesville Police Department. And we have no idea whether next time it'll be worse. And there will be a next time, you can count on that. So this is a very dangerous situation, and it's intolerable and must be remedied. The second element of our crisis is less dramatic, but equally dangerous. It is the day after day after day, year after year, bullying, disrespecting of the black people of our city by members of the Charlottesville Police Department. Now, defenders of the police department will say, there's not really a problem here. This is just a misunderstanding. But this is flatly contradicted by the police department's own documents, their own data, and by abundant, and I mean abundant, credible testimony from people who have been victims and witnesses of this racist abuse in our city. This is dangerous, but it's also shameful and has to be remedied. Counselors, for the sake of our people in our city, we must mount a resolute, aggressive, impatient campaign focused on fundamental reform of our police department, with a view toward establishing one day, hopefully soon, a police department that is 100% dedicated to protecting life and property, preserving public order, and 100% committed to respecting the civil rights of each and every person, regardless of race or class. The review board, the civilian review board, must be a key element in this campaign. But in order for it to do its job, council has to make sure that the board has the necessary resources, authorities, and muscle to do that job. Counselors, reform is urgent. Don't let us down. Thank you.
Ms. Walt. Looking right at you. There's the beard.
Right in front of you. Walt Heinecke, Amherst Street. So it's really nice to hear the connection tonight between the Ghana trip and the anti-racist work that needs to be done in this town. I'm really encouraged to hear that connection being made, because I too am really, really impatient with what we're doing with anti-racism in this town, whether it's the Human Rights Commission or the civilian review board that we're now about to talk about. First and foremost, you've heard it many times tonight, and it's, I mean, I'm going to repeat it, there needs to be some accountability for last summer. It's not over. There needs to be an investigation. You need to take some responsibility for figuring out what went wrong and how it went wrong, and take some ownership of how that went wrong. Accountability is incredibly important for what City Manager Jones put up on one of the slides, which is rebuilding public trust. You're not going to get that without accountability and a serious amount of accountability, attention to accountability. Firing the last police chief and rehiring this new police chief, which is great, is only symbolic. It's just a symbol of the problem. The problem runs much deeper in terms of the culture of the CPD, right? And you're going to have to address that. The real solution to the CRB is rebuilding trust with this community, that the community, especially the community that showed up last summer, you've marginalized them in the past. You have to start listening to those people in the community. Many of them are here tonight, here and out there. That's how you rebuild trust. You start building a civilian review board based on the views and the perspectives of the people that showed up prior to May and showed you what was going to happen going forward. It's time to bring those folks into the fold through the CRB process, right? So what you do with the CRB appointments is incredibly important, right? Let's not repeat the mistake of the Human Rights Commission, which we're now digging out of. Three years, five years later, we're trying to fix a problem. You have a great opportunity to circumvent that problem five years from now by appointing the right people to that board. And we know what happens in these boards and commissions. It's like a big washing machine, in which a lot of values get thrown around, right? And what happens is, in that washing machine of the city government, equity and justice and racial justice gets washed out, right? That's what happens in these processes. And that's what you have to sort of be aware of in terms of making these first initial appointments, which are huge, right? So the first job is creating an independent CRB that can actually do what I would say is an organizational development review of the police department. You have to do a cultural review of the organization, and I don't think it's up to the police chief to do it. I think it's up to you, and you have to appoint these trusted people of our community to help you do that by your appointments to the CRB. So thank you very much.
Katrina Turner, Charlottesville. I just want to say that when the new chief spoke and said she wasn't going to help hold the police accountable for last summer, I want to know if that also means she's not going to hold them accountable for everything else they've done also. All the complaints that have been filed against these police here, is that going to be thrown to the side? Also, is she going to ignore all those complaints and not reopen them? Because as y'all know, I have a complaint, and it's been going on for two years. And y'all have heard my son's story, but the story is that I raised my sons not to put their hand on women, because over 30 years ago, I was in a domestic abuse relationship, where I had to take my son and hide him in a closet one night, and lock him in his door, and I had to jump out the window myself, because my abuser was about to jump through my front room window to kill me. My son is six months old, the same one that the police arrested, when he called for help, at six months old, he was put in front of a car, told, "Kill him. Run him over, kill him." And thank God, somebody took my son from him, something in front of that car. But I was in a domestic abuse relationship for a long time, and it took a long time for me to get out. And for me to have raised my sons to do the right thing, and not put their hand on a woman because of what I went through, and then to turn around and him get arrested by the police because he called for help, because they chose to be the judge and the jury that night, and not do their job and help the person who called for them. So your officers need a whole lot of training around here. They need to be, there's a lot of them that need to be out of the police department. Gary Pleasance is one of the ones that did that to my son. Officer Hickey was another one. But instead of them reprimanding these two officers, they promoted them. Why promote these officers for what they're out here doing to us out here on the street? It might not have happened to me that night, but I saw everything the police did to my son that night while he was handcuffed. So there needs to be some accountability in Charlottesville Police Department. Thank you.
Brandon Collins.
Good evening again, Brandon Collins. I live in the city of Charlottesville, and I work for FAR, the Public Housing Association of Residents. And FAR is very much in support of the creation of an independent civilian review board of the police. And I want to stress independence with this review board. I know that when the conversations first came up about what was and wasn't possible in the Commonwealth of Virginia, the Confederate state of Virginia that has the Dillon Rule that won't let it do anything cool, that it severely limits your ability to put in and ordinance anything that really makes sense, anything that gives this board true power, subpoena power, anything that makes it truly independent. However, there are administrative remedies, and there's nothing to keep the police department, there's nothing to keep the city council from supporting this independent review board, from acting as if it's truly independent and as if it has subpoena power and as if the recommendations it makes for discipline are truly implemented, right? So if the police department can say, yes, when the civilian review board recommends discipline for an officer, we're going to implement what that board says. Now, you can't necessarily put that in law, but I think that's the spirit that you should go for. And I think that's the kind of big thinking that we need in this city. What we don't need is setting up yet another board that's just on the surface, looks like it's doing something. And we can look at the Human Rights Commission, and we can look at the potential for this to really not go anywhere. So I think it's highly important that the spirit of independence, that this board have its own power to do what really needs to happen, and that it's truly community-driven. Because it's true, the only thing that's going to fix this relationship is if the community has control of the police department, and that's what's going to start changing things, I hope. Some of us are skeptical. I hear from residents over the past seven or eight years, and they say they have a problem with the police. And I say, well, did you make a complaint? And they say, yeah. And I say, well, what happened? And nothing. It goes into a black hole. In some circumstances, they do get a response, and it's always the same response. Well, the police have determined that the officer was not at fault. And they seldom get any other detail, and that definitely has to change. When I hear Ms. Turner's story, and I've heard it a few times, I'm just perplexed that she's never gotten any real answer to that problem. And I feel like if you could look at just that one case and figure out what would address that, you might have an idea of how to move forward with something, with the community having some control over the having some control over the police department. Thank you.
Rosia Parker.
Good afternoon, Rosia Parker back. The reason why I still believe the CRB should be in effect is because I am a citizen that has had several white officers, men, put their hands on me from the top of my head to the bottom of my feet, to be dragged down the street and there's no black officers in sight. And the black low incomes, we, like I say, we need to be policed, protected and served, but not overpolice. There's a difference between overpolicing and policing. Policing is when you come into your community, you get to, you get to know your community. You get to have a relationship with your community. But if you're not having a relationship with your community where you're not trying to get to know your community members, besides when they're just coming in for a drug bust or when they're coming in for a J task force or when they're coming in to just try to set us up or while they're out there watching us, I feel that there is some accountability that needs to be taken. And accountability of what, two weeks ago, Katrina, three weeks ago, how y'all's police officers was wrong in what they were doing because they went off on informants' information? I'm a taxpayer, just because I live in low income, I still pay for their checks. And I feel that they were dead wrong in what they were doing. And then for them to come off that the community ended the way that they did, that was definitely dead wrong. I felt that they need to start, when they're wrong, they need to start apologizing to people. Because when you set a whole community in an uproar for something that an informant said, and when your police officer is so-called sitting up on top of that hill watching and you're still wrong and then you're going to run up in this woman's house without a warrant, that's definitely a problem that we have in our black communities. And we're not going to continue to be harassed having pictures taken of us just because we're black on a nice good Sunday or a nice good warm day, that we cannot sit in our community, five or six black people in the front yard without being harassed. And then y'all talk about another thing of transparency and community policing. Okay, last year, y'all came into West Haven to call yourself doing a pilot program for unity in the community. Okay, well mighty funny, more blacks got locked up for unity in the community and being barred than the white folks that walked through our neighborhood like it wasn't a problem. That's a problem. It's not only just West Haven that we have these issues in, it's in all the low-income neighborhoods. No, we're not right in things that we do, but we're not always wrong either. So I still say that somebody has to take accountability. And these are biased issues, this should have been in effect years ago for generations. But how many times are we going to keep talking about it and not being about it? Because we've been talking for years and I've been, I know I've been at this mic for, I don't know how many years since I've been in Charlottesville. So I think accountability needs to be taken care of and I think the civilians should be doing that.
Ms. Parker. Who had the unity in the community pilot?
Um, this is it, right Maurice?
I'm not sure, we're talking about Ms. Parker.
Did y'all have, what, that man that ran for city council? Jackson?
Kenny Jackson.
Kenny Jackson was in our neighborhood on August 11th.
With Confederate flags.
That's not a city.
It wasn't city-sponsored.
That's not a city program. That's not a city program. So he was doing it on behalf of the city?
They said they were doing the pilot program for the unity in the community. Otis told us that.
He was doing it on his own.
No, Otis and Thomas told me that. White Otis, which I don't care if they give his last name, but your black officer, Thomas.
Unity in the community.
Unity in the community.
And with Kenneth Jackson?
With Kenneth Jackson, August 11th. Don, what, do we not have a problem there in West Haven? Where is Ms. Joy at? Is she here?
We followed her. I don't know. I don't think she was. He wasn't in his own cell.
Yeah, but was he not doing unity in the community?
He was.
But the program that, when it came to us, they said it was a 30-day pilot program. Because Otis spoke to me, because Otis tells me, at that time, he was telling me everything because he was wrong when I got in trouble from the mistakes that he made with the other police officers from years ago. So he was giving me all the information that I needed. And I was using that to protect my community. But then when you, for me to turn it back around to use it against you, when you're in the wrong, when you're harassing our community, that's a problem.
Tell it, girl.
Thank you.
Don Gathers.
Good evening.
Accountability, responsibility, independence, these are the pillars that we've got to build this CRB on. And it is of tatt amount of importance that we give that that particular board has subpoena powers and investigative powers. Otherwise, it's just another paper committee that's sliding paper airplanes across the table at each other. And I don't think that anyone who signed up to be a part of that is interested in being part of a paper committee. We, Dr. Ractney, God bless you, welcome you, you have got to build some microcosm of trust back into this community with the police. And that's what's sorely lacking, more so than anything else. There is not a modicum of trust, especially between the black community and the police department right now that exists. And it's going to take a lot of effort, as Honorable Mayor Walker said, it's going to take a lot of work. We've got a lot of work to do. And we can't talk about this work anymore. We've got to actually get out and do it. We've got to be a part of it. So unless we are willing to actually put some teeth into this CRB and give the people the weight behind them that they need in order to do the work that obviously is necessary, we're wasting time again. And, you know, this community has been through so much already. We actually need to be about moving forward, making real progress, and the CRB, you have an opportunity here to do this. And the true dichotomy here, if done properly, it will manifest itself, not only the things that are going wrong with the police department, but may also reveal some things that are being done correctly. I know people don't want to believe that there are any things that are being done correctly, but it should, it's a double-edged sword and it truly should reveal and cut both ways and show both the problems and the successes. So I urge you, I implore you, please get behind these people, give them what they need without staff interference. If staff wants to assist, that's one thing, but not interfere. And let the CRB actually do the work that the community wants it to do. Thank you.
Nancy Carpena.
Yes, I am also in support of a very strong independent and the operative word is very independent civilian review board. I think that they need to have the investigative powers and the subpoena powers that previous speakers have talked about, things that Ms. Katrina and Ms. Rosia say are very important to the conversation, that what Jim and Walt and Brandon were talking about are very important to this community. I do think that there is an extreme level of distrust. We haven't had the accountability over the past year. We have, you know, who knows what will happen this summer. There are some things that, you know, even the civilian hopefully review board could do, which would be to, you know, have subpoena powers, perhaps even get the charges dropped against redneck revolt, Corey Long, Donald Ractney. And to, you know, for someone to say that, to go against command orders from their commander and gas counter protesters, no, that person should not have the graciousness of being allowed to resign admirably. He does not deserve that kind of consideration. So those are the kinds of things I hope the civilian review board can look into as a strong independent commission devoid of bureaucratic interference and be able to, once again, I think that we need to have, you know, definitely civilian oversight of a lot of what the police do in this city.
Mary Currie.
Now, I grew up in this town 72 years ago. They had police officers walking beats. We knew these police officers. We protected these police officers from the KKK, who was protecting us from the KKK. Now, we need that protection from the police, from the KKK, but a lot of the police officers are the KKK. So what are we going to do? All I got to say is right now, city council people, is that it's for y'all to understand that it's so much hurt and pain in this city. It's been here for years. I marched in the 60s. I was a teenager. I was here to listen to Dr. Martin Luther King and Jesse Jackson three times in Charlottesville. I went along with all that. It's still here. Now, if you can get a citizen review board here to kind of like combat some of this hatred and some of this racism in the police department, we'll be all right. It's not all the guys, because I know a lot of police officers that they may look at you like, like this and like that and like that. But dig down inside, they don't like what's going on either. But it must be fear that they're not turning on these bad ones. But I tell you one thing, they got to suck it up, buttercup. But I'm going to tell you like this, this is what I came up here to say. When you start getting committees and boards and things in Charlottesville, it seems like it's a personal thing. It's like they're doing it for their own personal gain or whatever, the bar, the whatever. They go around and they vote on things only because it's not in their neighborhood. And then they don't do it right. But when you do something right, you get a lot out of it, Mr. Jones. And I've noticed that, like Ms. Carpena said, when you and Mr. Gather said, "You don't need no staff telling people what to do when you appoint boards. You appoint boards. So why would you put a staff member in there? Because that's just what they had at their Human Rights Commission. They had staff in there telling people what to do. Neighborhood development, the little man, what's his name, Alex? He is so mean and nasty. I don't know what's going on with him. Y'all need to talk to him because he need to be on medication." But I'm going to tell you something now, if y'all get a board, a review board, I was thinking about getting on that board, but I think I'll wait till the next round. My boys, my youngest son is 45 years old. I got three sons. They grew up with police. They did boxing. They took trips to different cities with the police. Right down there at Carver Center Gym. My son got trophies of boxing. He went to Ohio. He went to Wisconsin. They even went to San Diego one time. This Charlottesville Police Department, where is it now? Police need to get out the saddle and start walking. That's all I got to say.
So Madison, and I'm not sure with the last.
So I'm Madison and we're with Montschal High School. And I did want to start this off by saying thank you for approving and establishing the civilian police report board. There is an extensive history of police communication in the community and I think that's important to acknowledge and, I'm blanking, sorry. When we talk about different points in our history and acknowledge what the police have done wrong and done right, we have to talk about how citizens are able to communicate and level the playing field and be able to talk at a level that, blanking again, sorry. I gather my thoughts in a second. Being treated as equals, yes, to put it nicely. And of course, you know, the protest of August 12th comes up again and again and again. And I think that if anything was a breaking point, where all of this started to spill over. And I'm hoping that this review board is constructive and as we've said before, that we'll be able to communicate without interference, provide accountability for police officers and be able to actually do something about it. I'm trying to think of what else I'm supposed to say. A little bit, it's my first time doing this. Thank you. We want to approach the event proactively and have these appropriate discussions in a way that we can, just want to comment at any point.
In a way that helps protect people's individual rights as well as like maintain public safety at the same time, which I know is hard to do and it's hard to come from like an outsider's point of view, just saying that. But just from our research and observation as Charlottesville citizens, like I think our community is built so much on communication and creativity and just that open connection with each other and just have an event like this happen really sends a tidal wave of, you know, it's a wake-up call. And it's a wake-up call to come back into community and like really address the problems that have been on the forefront of a long time.
To close it out, it is a positive opportunity for change and course correction in Charlottesville's narrative.
Especially with a new mayor.
Yep.
Nothing you wanted to say, Lemon? Christian Means?
Take your time.
Christian Means, Montschal High School senior. As you heard, my group just recently presented our findings from a research project that we've been doing in school. But I felt the need to come here and speak myself, just because there's so much more to the topic. This review board is a great opportunity to make change in our city. But I've only lived here for about five and a half years and I've picked up that Charlottesville is a lot about status and it's a lot about committees and boards. And I just don't want this board to, I really see the things that this board could change and I don't want this board to go down the list of other boards that have just been made for status and just to say that it exists and say that we are making change. And so I guess what I'm trying to say is that when you're appointing these board members, that we truly look into their character, we truly look into who these people are and make this board effective. We do so much to have the name, to reach us a level of success in the city so that we can have a voice. Well, now they're going to have a voice. So please just allow them all the liberties that they may need to get the job done and to really bring back the love of this community I know and can see that it has. My group, we recently sat down with former police chief Tim Wonga and he was on Georgetown panel discussion. And he talked about how it was heartbreaking for him to see our community divided once again from the police, that they'd been trying to build back together the community relations between police officers. And that's gone right now, let's just be blunt about it. That connection's gone between the community and the police right now. And this advisory board is, I think that's the hopes of all the people here, is that it can rebuild that connection, bring back Charlottesville that I saw and the future that I see in it. So, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Jeff Fogel. I live in the Belmont section of town. Of course, this, the idea of this panel is long overdue. Just about 165, 170 years overdue, but overdue. But I have more questions than I have comments tonight. You have signed on to the notion of an independent review board. How are you going to assure that it's independent? Have you thought about it? Have you come up with any ideas about how you're going to make that assurance? How do you ensure a board is independent when it is politicians who are picking the people who are the members of the board, each of whom have their own... each of whom have their own views? How do you do that? Is this body going to support the civilian review board when it asks for information? Let's take some obvious ones, like the narrations for the stop and frisk dad. The ones that we've been asking for for six years. The ones that we asked for without any identifying information on them. Without the name of the police officer, without the name of the person accosted, without any witnesses. What was the reason we couldn't get it? We went to court, you know that, you defended it. We went to court and the judge ruled that there's a large hole in the FOIA law that a Mack truck could flow through for the police department and that they were not required to turn it over. Well, the fact that they're not required to turn it over doesn't mean that they can't turn it over. And so I sought and obtained a meeting with the city manager, who I will remind you is the Public Safety Director. And I asked him, "Mr. Jones, why can't we have this information? What problems are implicated by our getting it?" And his answer was, "Just what our lawyer said in court." And I said, "Your lawyer never said anything in court about why you won't give it to us. The police chief won't tell us." So the question is, "Why didn't we get it?" We've never gotten an answer for you, Mr. Jones. But again, that's been typical, as I said last time. You never respond to my comments. And I do object to it still calling it responses to the public because it's Mr. Jones deciding who and what he wants to talk about. I give you a series of questions. What did you do on August 12th? How much did you know about them stopping to keep statistics about stop and frisk? Has that been changed? What did you know about the problem of the police narratives? Why couldn't we get them? Presumably, it was your direction, but you don't wanna tell anybody and you don't wanna answer. I really urge you not to call this responses to the public, but to call it Mr. Jones's opportunity to say whatever he wants. Because what we were given tonight was another public relations job about how wonderful the city is. We don't need public relations jobs. We need hard work, we need to dig down, we need to recognize specifically what our problems are and address them. And this BS that comes out of the city in every possible way, in all of the workshops I've been to on the comprehensive plan and otherwise, is all, "We're great, we're doing a wonderful job." We don't need any citizens in this town.
Is there anyone else like to speak?
Evan Brown, Charlottesville resident. I'd like to agree with everyone that's come up here speaking on behalf of the Citizens Review Board, or excuse me, Civilians Review Board. I'd like to mention something that hasn't been part of the conversation from this board, and that is the problem of police militarization. We see this throughout the country. We've seen it here on July 8th when police deploy chemical weapons against their own people, their own residents. And it's not just weapons, it's also how police officers interact with people. We've seen, at least myself and others, have seen a police officer slam presumably a homeless man to the ground, knocking him unconscious, dragging him bleeding, and slumping him over a bench. And I even asked you, Mr. Jones, if we know if that man is alive. We don't, we still don't know if he's alive, he could've been killed. But, and you know, just outside the city, another man was killed by police, Marcus Peters, who was naked. Naked. Now, the police, again, in this community, as we've seen, in this country, hell, even worldwide, they are acting more and more like an occupying force rather than actual members of our community. So I ask that when you think about appointing people to the CRB and the people who are on the CRB are drafting bylaws and figuring out what they can and can't do, think about how you can combat police militarization. Figure out what kind of weapons they're buying, what kind of training they're doing this summer. Are they training as soldiers? Are they training to kill people this summer? 'Cause I wouldn't be surprised if that happens. I'm surprised it hasn't happened. Okay? And that needs to be made at least, you know, made available to the CRB this summer. They need to know what kind of plans are being made and if they will treat us residents as just, you know, enemy combatants. Because that's what it feels like. It feels like, and I know this, like just as a white person here, like it feels like it. So I can't even imagine what it's like as a black person or anyone else. It must feel like being invaded by an occupied force. And I think that, again, police militarization must be addressed as well as looking into policies of police disarmament as well. Thank you.
Alright, anyone else?
Hi, I am here as a participant with other members of the Charlottesville Community Resilience Fund who, for a second year, participated in the Southerners on New Ground Black Mama Bailout action for Mother's Day 2018. Once again, Charlottesville far exceeded the fundraising efforts that, the fundraising goals that were set for us by the national campaign. And despite the amount of money that mostly wealthy white people here in Charlottesville were able to throw at this fund, we were, for the second year in a row, unable to bail out any black women for Mother's Day. Despite the fact that we were able to identify several black women being detained at Avramar Charlottesville Regional Jail at the time, who were being detained pre-trial or pre-sentencing and denied bond for nonviolent offenses, including check fraud and violation of probation where the original offense was nonviolent. But then on the other side, we had Richard Preston, who is a Grand Wizard of the KKK, who showed up in Charlottesville on August the 12th and discharged a firearm twice at community defender Corey Long, who faces charges himself by this city. Richard Preston was convicted of his charges, his violent charges. And Judge Downer saw fit to let him go home to Maryland to sit in peace until his sentencing in August. The crying Nazi, Chris Cantwell, is also sitting comfortably at home awaiting his trial despite the fact that he attacked students and community members on August 11th at the base of the rapist Thomas Jefferson statue on UVA grounds. So we see these discrepancies in how very specific groups of people are treated in Charlottesville. So, yes, accountability for egregious police actions is obviously necessary as long as we live in this violent police state. But there is a whole system at play which includes the courts, its judges, and the Commonwealth's Attorney's Office, whose biased practices must be addressed. But we cannot get to that place of accountability if the city and its council fail in establishing a robust review board for its police. I personally do not trust the city to adequately address the grievances against its own police. I call on this community to continue to challenge the egregious abuse of powers by the city's police forces, its staff, these courts, their judges, and the jail until true justice is served. And just very quickly, I know my time is up, but in response to the presentation made by Mr. Jones and the way that former Mayor Signer responded as if, you know, these proclamations and things are some kind of thing to be celebrated by us, there were no reports of gun injuries or deaths on August the 12th. The Georgetown lawsuit against the Nazis that has caused many of the Nazis to decide not to come back, it's just creating, you know, this like legal loophole that will be easy for them to get through. So, you know, they don't show up affiliated with some known neo-Nazi group. They just show up as individuals and say that, "Oh, we all happen to be here together, you know, at the same time."
Thank you, Donna.
So, you know, these things are not going to keep the Nazis out of here. Like creating these legal loopholes is not going to protect us from Nazis. You have to ban the Nazis. You have to ban the Nazis.
Gleeson Wilson, I live on the downtown mall. And I wanna say, I agree with most of the things that people have said. But, let's talk about something else. So, I've lived in Charlottesville.
With the civilian review board?
Hmm?
Are you, is this?
No.
That's what the public hearing is for?
I can get it. I can do it.
Hello, my name is Helen Plaisance and I am one of the thirteen or twelve candidates for the Citizen Police Review Board. And what I'd like to say is that it's been quite an experience, both on April 24th and this evening, to hear the strength and passion behind people who have been wronged by a system that is supposed to protect them. One of the reasons I applied for this position was because I worked for an employer who has a novel set of values. The first one is, always keeps you safe. And when I first heard some of my friends talk about the things that had happened to them or that were done to them, I thought, wow, there's a novel concept. Maybe we should start with a vision that says everyone in Charlottesville should be kept safe. I know that the work associated with things like mission and vision and bylaws is pretty dry. It's intense, but it really forms the basis for what a good civilian review board can do. And I believe that with the base idea of everyone's job is to keep everyone else safe, we can start there and build something that will really work for the city and heal it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Luis Oyola, Lynchburg Road. I am very concerned that in this conversation about the civilian review board where the disappearance of Sage Smith will be dropped by the wayside. Sage Smith has been missing, is a black trans woman who has been missing since November 20th, 2012. The police, a couple weeks ago, went to her residence at the time of the disappearance for the first time since her disappearance. It took five and a half years for them to decide to do that. This is just one of many examples of negligence in the hands of the Charlottesville Police Department. And the Charlottesville Police Department does not need to wait for the civilian review board to order them to do so before they do a public apology to Sage Smith's family for their negligence. Like, the investigation of Sage's residence shows that police always knew where to go, who to interview, where to search, because they also did that for Hannah Graham. The civilian review boards gotta have access to internal communications about disappearances. They gotta be able to review evidence and they have to have binding conclusions. The info that they got to start their investigation, they got it from Sage's family and friends. And that's, a lot of that info has only been made public now with the ID Channel's feature documentary, which by the way, had rampant detonating of Sage and misgendering. And we need to be absolutely clear that Sage was identifying as a trans woman at the time of the disappearance. Those are the media standards, these are the legal standards for how we identify people. It is by the identity at the time of, at the time that they decided to have that identity. And it is important, they say excuses of, oh, well, it helps with finding people. But the transphobia in the police department, the transphobia in Charlottesville is part of the reason why people don't care about finding Sage. We need to look into all discrepancies around ignored disappearances, going back to Wolfork's case as well, and justice for their family. The civilian review board appointees as part of the bylaws process must be educated about these cases and they must gather these stories directly from the families as part of that process and not wait until the review board is established. Thank you.
Mark Heisey, Alva Marle County. Yeah, so I'd just like to go back to a previous point, which is that in order for this civilian review board to have any kind of effect in this city, it needs to be able to hold the Charlottesville Police Department and Charlottesville police officers to account. There needs to be accountability. As long as there's policing, we need to be able to hold police accountable for their actions. As Louise just mentioned, Sage Smith disappeared over five years ago. And until just recently, CPD did nothing to investigate her disappearance and no one's been held accountable. A black woman was repeatedly raped by a white police officer here in the city. Because he admitted it, he was fired. But the city wasn't able to convict the police officer, which is not only proves culpability on the part of the Commonwealth's Attorney, the jury, the officer who did it, but also on the police department who was in charge of investigating that criminal rape. A black female activist was arrested in the middle of the night. No one was held accountable. Jeff Fogel was arrested in the middle of the night. No one was held accountable. Veronica was arrested for yelling at a Nazi. Jeff was arrested for touching a Nazi. And no one was held accountable for their arrest. Gary Pleasance, without authorization, tear-gassed members of the community who were nonviolently demonstrating against the KKK. No one's been held accountable. In fact, Pleasance is about to retire with a full pension. Five anti-racist activists were arrested for covering their faces with scarves and bandanas to protect themselves from the tear gas that cops had shot at them. No one's been held accountable for their arrest. They were charged with felony masking, no one's held accountable. The police held back and did nothing while Nazis beat members of this community and killed Heather Heyer. No one's been held accountable. Ms. Katrina's son was arrested and beaten two years ago, as she already talked about, when he called for help. She's filed a claim and has been waiting for that, for anything to be done by the city on that claim for two years. No one's been held accountable. While Charlottesville residents are 20% black, stop and frisks make up seven, or black, stop and frisks, 70% of them are against black folks, no one's been held accountable for that. So it's going to take everything that the CRB asks for, like subpoena powers, investigatory powers, and I would add the option to hire personnel for that body to be able to make any kind of change in even the least way. Because currently, there's absolutely no accountability on the part of the police department to the people of the city of Charlottesville.
Hi, I'm Frank Richards, I live in the city on Pine Street. Obviously, the cases are legion that are on the table right away that we have to deal with, A-11, Ms. Katrina's case, stop and frisk, and so many others. I would also hope though that somewhere down the line, and this kinda piggybacks on what Evan was saying, that we really consider what the nature of policing is in this town and in society more broadly. We're criminalizing so many areas of modern life, drug use and, you know, economic crimes and everything else that may be beyond the purview, at least in the immediate sense of what the CRB is. But we've really got to think about that. Do we really need people with guns showing up when somebody's suffering a mental health crisis? Is that, you know, is that, you know, is, you know, yeah, you know, after the fact, you may be able to investigate wrongdoing, you know, if you even do and hold people accountable, but the damage has already been done. We've really gotta consider what policing means in this city and more broadly in this society. So I would hope that the CRB, if it truly strives to be independent, would like, try to think outside the box a little bit and not just kinda like, you know, kinda judge a pre-existing narrative, but like a pre-existing narrative, but like, to push the envelope a little bit, and let's consider, you know, what thing, you know, are police social workers? Do we really need people with guns doing social work and mental health outreach? I would propose no, but I hope the CRB can also see it that way. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jake Mooney, I'm a city resident. And I just want to talk briefly about August 12th and public trust in the police. We had another white supremacist, violent white supremacist plead guilty today. You know, I can't help noticing though that, sorry. All those men have been arrested, you know, two have now pled guilty, one was found guilty. They're all identified by activists and people on the internet, you know. Maybe the police were trying and didn't get there quick enough, I don't know. But, it's a little puzzling. And, there was a story in ProPublica recently about a, an active-duty US Marine who bragged about coming to Charlottesville and cracking skulls. He hasn't been arrested, he's identified by name. A citizen journalist on Twitter asked Steve Ullman of the Charlottesville Police Department, the public information officer, whether he was gonna be charged, and Ullman's response was, "At this time, there's been no complaint filed. Should any victims denoted in the article wish to file a report, the Charlottesville Police Department will investigate." That seems like a crazy threshold to me, frankly. This incident, it's a pretty famous picture of some neo-Nazis beating up an activist on August 12th. Those men have been identified, again by ProPublica. Their names are published here, they live in California, but I don't know, as a resident of the city, why those men haven't been charged. And I think this is the kind of thing that just makes me wonder sort of what the police department has been doing for the last nine, 10 months. Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to speak? Okay, closing public hearing. All right, counsel.
Well, Mia Walker, if I may open this up, it does seem like we need to discuss what will it take to make this a truly independent board? And I just opened that up for discussion with our colleagues, and one thing that was just, came to mind is that we do need to resource this organization. Should this organization then be allowed to hire its own staff person? Because there does seem to be some concern about whether it's staffed by the city or the police department. It was just a thought that occurred to me tonight.
But I think the initial group of people will-
Yeah.
-present us with-
But, okay, just, but I wanted to, that would require different resources. I mean, than us providing a staff person to it, because they're going to need some assistance, I would think, to write and do investigation, and just to do kind of administrative work. It's just what I'm-
Yeah, I think the most important thing is that whatever we are presented with, based on this year's findings, that we honor what they-
Oh, absolutely.
And I don't, I don't know how much discussion there is before then.
Just thinking that they may need some help to do their research, to get the findings to tell us that it's on presenting.
But they'll be able to come to us.
Okay.
I don't, you know, one of the things the community has watched over the last many months is the awkwardness of the design of how counsel interacts on operational questions like policing. And it's very challenging in our form of government, because counsel doesn't direct policing. So, I would very much like to know some answers to the questions that were raised by Mr. Mooney about this intelligence, about these military members who have been identified, who seem to have been documented to have been here. I've read some of these articles too, and it is, it seems insane, and infuriating, bewildering, and frightening, and it seems like there should be some action about this. And I would, but then also, I know that one of the things that was going on with some of the, with the delay that, like, I don't know this other than from reading about it, but I know that with the delay that happened with the work that Shaun King was doing, and how long it seemed to take, is that the police sometimes take a while to put together an investigation. So, they are, it takes them more time to dot all the i's and cross all the t's, so that they know that they can win in court. So, there's a process that does, the gears move a little more slowly. But I would really like to know, to the extent that we can know, what the hell is happening with this, with these stories about active-duty military. I'm just saying that I would like to know, to the extent that we can know about what we can be told about these military officers that are being reported to have been involved here.
We can provide information to the-
Thank you, very much.
Any other?
I guess if there is some way that we can communicate to the public what the schedule is for the next steps, that might be helpful. Like, how long it's gonna take for us to, and when we'll make the selections, and when we'll get up and running.
As I mentioned, yeah, as I mentioned in the report, June 4th, the council will decide on the seven members of the CRB and make that announcement publicly.
And I'll just say, as someone who has grown up in the community, who has lived in places, when we're talking about overpolicing, who Sage was in our, my friend group, our first baby, so, it's a very different, it's not, it's not a place of activism for me. When you're talking about Quinn Woodfalk, my cousin was dating Quinn's brother, has a daughter, so Quinn's, my cousin best friend's daughter is his, her uncle is missing. Like, it's different. So, I am aware of what's needed, I have lived it. And every time I sit in a room, I'm not coming with just stories that I've read, I'm coming from a very lived experience, and people who are asking me questions on a daily basis, and it's a very different place. So, almost, as Ms. Carey was sitting up here saying, "I haven't been here that long," but, from being here and living here, I am aware, and I'm aware on a very personal level of how bad it has been, the changes that are needed, and what overall, not just with police accountability, but overall the systemic issues that we have in Charlottesville, and what needs to change. So, I know that whatever comes out of this, this year, with the seven members, that I know that I will do my best to honor it.
All right. Okay.
She said it, I talk to her every day. She said it. I'm good.
Okay. All right, so now, are we moving on? I feel like we need a break.
No.
No. It's not break time, yo, what time is that?
Yeah, I'm sorry, that's right.
No.
Sorry, next break will be about 10:10.
Yeah, it's a long time. So, Lisa, if you would-
I'm sorry.
No.
It feels very brief-like.
Are we going on the-
No, we're moving on, Lisa's presenting, I think.
Trying to get to-
Okay. What time is the next?
About 10:10 or so.
It's feeling like a long night. I know what you meant.
We're going to the-
Oh, no, I was talking to Darren.
Oh, I'm not.
I don't know, but I'm not cursed. Trying to hold my time.
Does he know it's your comment?
Sorry, I'm having technical difficulties over here, so I'm gonna borrow Paige's computer for a second.
Thank you. Again, welcome to Charlottesville.
Yeah, we talked, we had a good talk. Yeah, and he was like, yo, she, she good. She's been in Pittsburgh. He's like, she can handle it, and we all talked that.
Okay.
It's gotten cooler in the room, too.
You have in front of you an application from an LLC by the name of LBQ Properties. The individual associated with the application is Jeffrey Quinn, who's the owner of property at 928 Monticello Avenue. Mr. Quinn has submitted a petition to close a portion of a 12-foot wide alley that was created by, many years ago, by a subdivision plat or some other deed, but has never been accepted by the city, which is located off of Castilla Street. There are five adjoining property owners, and the alley has been in existence since 1891. Mr. Quinn is asking to close the alley because a large garage or shed on his property encroaches into the area of it, and has created some title problems. The mechanism for closing this type of an alley is an ordinance that's proposed to be adopted by city council. You have in front of you a staff report that focuses on the provisions of an existing street policy that was adopted by city council in 2005. The application can be approved by adoption of the ordinance. If city council ultimately decides not to approve the application, that decision can be adopted by a motion. I think you all have had a chance to read the staff report, and there are no clear objections by anyone from utilities or public works or that sort of thing, so you're free to review the application and consider any additional information the applicant may wish to provide tonight.
Good evening, thank you very much for your time and consideration in this matter. I've originally applied for the alley to, from my property to Castilla Street to be abandoned, in order to resolve this encroachment issue that we became aware of right after closing. I have since talked to several of the neighbors, and a couple of them do have issues with closing the alley. So, taking that into consideration, I was hoping that I could possibly amend my application to not close the alley from my property all the way to Castilla Street, but just behind my property. I have been in touch with my neighbor directly to the rear, Alisa Ferretti, and she is 100% supportive of the closure. I've also, since deciding to make this change, I supplied you with some photographs. As you can see, on the top page, that is a picture looking down the alleyway from my property, over the next two properties, and it's got trees that have to be 20-plus years old, growing in the middle of it, and there are fences, and sheds, and trees going all the way down. Just for purposes of complete openness, I've also included a picture on the second page, which is from my property to Castilla Street, which is the portion I had originally requested to be closed, as well as photographs at the far other end of the alley from Meridian Street down, which there seems to be a bit of a grass alley going for a few houses, but again, then dead ends and fences and tree lines going all the way in. If there's any questions or any more information that I could supply, more than happy to.
I have a question, I'm trying to understand what you said, you're modifying-
Your request, so, is it possible for a vehicle, even a bicycle, or anybody to go through it?
No, ma'am.
I mean, I'm not making a judgment calling that at all right now, but I just wanted to make sure I understood, so you're still-
There's no way to pass through it. But, after speaking with a couple of the neighbors, they're, they want, they live to the left of me toward Castilla Street, there's, I believe, two houses behind and one on Montavista, they, I'm sorry, Monticello. They had concerns, and they, you know, were interested in keeping the alley open, at least to their portion of the house. So, taking that into consideration, trying to be a good neighbor, and trying to see what works for everybody, that's why I just wanted to change it from closing from my house to Castilla Street, to just behind my house. Because the whole alleyway, as I said, the far, the rest of the alley, all the way down, almost, yeah, not quite, is covered in 20, 30, 40-year-old oak trees, and fences, and sheds, and that nobody has passed down that street since they were riding horses in the city.
So, you purchased this property with this garage structure already in place?
Well, we discovered it, that it was encroaching, like, right after closing. We didn't have a, I didn't, I did a boundary survey, and that's when we discovered it. This property actually belongs to a cousin of a very good friend of mine. They inherited it, they have absolutely nothing that they could possibly do to deal with the house, to deal with the encroachment, and so, we're working together to redo the house and sell it, and kind of work together. But he didn't have the money or the ability to come in and go through this process, or work on the house, or anything, so-
So, a prior owner that put that garage in?
Yes. Oh, no, not me or them. I think that garage, it's my understanding, was built back in the 50s, when they purchased the house originally. So, it's been there since, I think he was saying, 1952 was the number they gave me, but I don't have an exact-
And the reason you're asking for all this is just because it's encroaching and-
Yeah, I just want to make it right. I just, I mean, honestly, if I didn't think to do a boundary survey, I probably could have just sold it off to somebody else with the encroachment. No one would have known or cared, because it's been there forever, and it shows on the plat, you know, they just, it's sitting there. But I, when I did an actual boundary survey, that's when it came up. So, I just felt the best thing to do was to try to correct it properly, as opposed to just kind of pass it on to somebody else.
Ms. Robertson, do we not have other options for how we can accommodate this, given the timeline? Oh, sorry, we're supposed to open a public hearing first, I'm sorry. You're right. Sorry.
All right, so, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, opening public hearing, is there anyone here to speak?
This wasn't really what I came here to talk about tonight, but Mark Cabot, 400 Altamont Street. It seems to me that you all need to have a survey of what he actually wants to do, so there's no question as to what may come up on this matter in the future. It also looks like that if a, I'm concerned about the neighbors as far as them having access to this area, because there seems to be some concern that the neighbors don't necessarily want to see a total closure of the place. Maybe an easement that would be granted would also be something that could be done to give the neighbors that are involved in this ability to use this or enter the property, depending on what needs to be done completely with it. But I'd be very concerned about total closure, since it does seem to be some concern about total closure of the property.
Hello.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm Joy Pugh, my wife Biz Glover, we live at 917 Bowling Avenue, so this alley is- We live at 917 Bowling Avenue, so this alley is in the backyard of our property, and we oppose closing the alley. Our home was newer construction in Belmont, and when the builder built it, he was told to provide off-street parking, and in working with City Development Office, they approved an off-street parking that is accessible from the alley. So we have a parking pad back there and may in the future want to utilize that. When we also put the shed on the back of the property, we use this alley to bring in materials for the shed instead of, because it's a pretty big slope down to bowling at the front, so you don't really want to be carrying things up that hill. So we do use the alley. Not feeling great about the flipping of the house and sort of the honesty. When we talked to the city attorney's office, they said that this gentleman had spoken to the neighbors and gotten approval, and we had never spoken to him before, I guess, a few days ago. So just a few sort of trust issues about what the intent is with the house, and saying he spoke to the neighbors and did not. And our neighbors, Mark and Dream at 919 Bowling Avenue, you should have a letter in your packet, they're out of town. They also oppose the alley for similar, similar reasons. The closing of the alley, sorry.
Yeah, she pretty much said.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your service.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here? Okay, closing public hearing.
Sorry, can I ask the question I asked earlier, around what options we have?
So if the city had title to the land, we sometimes use what's called an encroachment agreement that could be approved, short of actually selling the land. But because this is such an old alley, we don't have title. We just have an interest that hasn't been perfected yet. The staff report, as you saw, or the agenda materials, indicated that, at least at some point, the owner of 915 Bowling Avenue had indicated that he or she would give Mr. Quinn an easement. So to the extent that Mr. Quinn and that property owner actually continue to have the underlying title, that easement would resolve the encroachment of the garage into that adjacent property owner's land, but wouldn't necessarily resolve any infringement on the, the city's sort of unperfected interest. But right now, because the city hasn't decided to use it for anything and hasn't taken title yet, there's no sort of urgent city reason to, to care whether or not that encroachment is there. So there, there are, there, the easement would resolve any, the easement from the, the opposite property owner would resolve any sort of immediate issues as to whether or not the garage is on one parcel of private property versus another, but it doesn't resolve the longer-term issue of whether there's an encroachment into what could later become a city right-of-way. So the garage is on property that, and besides the owner who's requesting this, no one else has an issue with where the garage, the land that the garage is on? I think that's, I think that's right. So if, you know, if, if, if this is the alley and it's 12 feet wide, technically, the title to each property owner goes to the center line. So that's six feet of property for each adjacent owner. But apparently, the garage is another 1.3 feet across that line into the property of the, the person behind Mr. Quinn.
I don't know if anyone's ready for a motion, but Mayor Walker, I'm ready to propose a motion.
Are there any more comments, questions?
I'm just starting because I just feel like he's just trying to kind of do the right thing and doesn't even really seem to want to have the alley closed, but we have this issue of something that's been here for decades, and I'm just trying to figure out the path of least resistance so everyone is kind of move forward, because it doesn't seem like there's that much discrepancy among folks, but.
I could get the ball rolling.
Okay.
So I move that council deny the adoption of a formal ordinance to vacate the subject alley off Castalia Street, as alleys in general still serve a distinct public interest. I need a second.
I'll second it, so we have.
So a discussion.
A discussion, yeah.
So the, what I'd like to make the point is that alleys are very much a way to access property without impinging upon the ease and walkability of the public street. And driveways in particular are a particular challenge for people in wheelchairs, people with strollers, when they're encroaching upon the, the main right-of-way on the sidewalk. An alley is a very good, easy way to consolidate all the entry and exit points for cars, limiting the conflict points between cars and pedestrians. And we had a good example of that just during the public hearing. As one of the, one of the residents talked about how they use that alley for very good reasons. It's also really important to note that this is also part of a building body of city policy. The Streets That Work references the importance of resolving conflicts between driveways and pedestrians, and it, by reference, is including what they call the, the National Association of City Transportation Official Street Design Guidelines, which directly call for the importance and retention of alleys as a way to segregate conflicts between pedestrians and cyclists and cars. So I think, if anything, we should be looking towards trying to preserve and activate the alleys that we have in our possession, not give them up. And it is very much in keeping with, as I said, our Streets That Work policy, which is now being turned into our Standards and Design Manual. So that is my motion, and I know historically it's been the default of the city to vacate alleys, and I think we're moving towards a situation where our default should be to protect and preserve our alleys and look towards ways of, as Ms. Robertson put it, perfecting our entitlement. So that, that is the one motion I have right now. I do have another motion to make that deals with researching this. But right now, right, this is just simply the motion at hand.
And I support that motion and the whole, I'm just, I'm still getting my head around, like, what can we do for this unique situation, because I do think that that's what it.
And that's a separate issue in my mind, but.
Certainly.
Making an ordinance for this case, when it goes against a growing body of city policy, seems to be the wrong direction.
I'd like to call a question. If there's no more comments, I'd like to call a question. Mayor Walker.
So there's a, the motion is to deny, so just, okay.
Yeah, it's no vote, but.
It's a first of two reads.
First of two.
No, no, but if it's, if it's a motion to deny.
Don't we do it right now?
Ms. Robertson, is it? It's not a first of two readings if it's motion to deny.
That's right.
So this is a full vote.
That's right.
All right. So vote.
Motion to deny.
All right, so that carries five to zero.
So, if I may, Ms. Walker, I'm your Walker, I have another proposal. And it is, given the, the, the resolution would be to develop a new policy on the public right-of-way as it pertains to alleys and what we call paper streets. And you got a copy at your, at your seats at the dais. And I had been advised by Ms. Robertson before the meeting that it was better to break up the two motions. We just passed one motion, but now this is a motion that, in light of our, our growing city policy about the importance of alleys, that we would direct, the city council would direct the Place Design Task Force, legal counsel staff, and city consultant to revise and create policies and procedures for the vacation, preservation, creation of public way as it pertains to alleys and paper street, streets, including, but not limited to defining it, measuring it, inventorying them in the city, retaining and activating them for public use, particularly for existing alleys and paper streets. Looking into the design and construction alleys for new, at, public alleys within a block, determining instances where the vacation of existing alleys and paper streets may be warranted, and incorporating these standards and metrics and findings into other important city documents, such as the Standards and Design Manual and other city policies and procedures for the vacation, closing, and abandonment of streets and alleys. And that the further be it resolved that the Place Design Task Force, legal counsel staff, and city consultant would submit draft policies and procedures as it pertains to these alleys and paper streets by December 2018. And that should be in keeping with the completion of the Standards and Design Manual. But again, alleys are an important piece to, it was brought up this, in this discussion tonight.
Yeah, so this, I would like to get this information before, and you acknowledged in the email that you sent out, but to be able to look at it.
Sure.
And not make a decision on it.
If we could put this on to another evening, that this was just an introduction, with this interest on council.
But I'm still confused what we're, what we're, how we're directing this citizen with this certain, this specific circumstance. I mean, are we saying that it hasn't been a problem, so kind of just move forward? I'm, I'm just confused about how we're, how we're leaving this circumstance.
Well, the garage has been there for a really long time. And so, you know, I'm not, it, it's a very difficult thing to resolve for something that's, that's been there for so long. It, it wasn't clear to me what the reason, why we needed to resolve it right now.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe that just could have been explained better, but I, I just wasn't really hearing what exactly was the urgency, since the garage has been there for several decades, so.
Okay, all right.
And Mayor Walker and Ms. Robertson, just, Mr. Jones, just a point of clarification for the proposed resolution that, that I just brought forth, that can be brought back into June or something like that, or, because I, it sounds like June 4th might be getting pretty packed.
Yeah, we'll take a look.
Okay, thank you very much.
Is there, I mean, is there support among council for, for bringing this back? Do we have?
I'm interested, yeah. Talking about it further, yes.
Are there three?
I didn't know we needed three to get it on an agenda.
I mean, I just still need to be able to look at this and get more information about how.
It's my understanding that it's, Ms. Rice, like, asked that question, it's really. You may have always done three, but it's only needed two to get it on the agenda.
Did we change that in the rules system? I mean, it was three last, last time.
That. Ms. Rice and I had a conversation about this, and it's my understanding that that may have been a practice, but the rule was only two, to get it on an agenda.
But I think that this is something that we can discuss further, because it's just, it's new information. So maybe once we have more information and have time to look at it, then there may be, I don't think we have enough information at this time.
Well, if I may, the, it was a real, it was a resolution to get more information to make a policy about alleys that we don't currently have. So that was, it was directing staff and a advisory group to pursue that research and to do that work. So that's why, it, that's, I just want to clarify that.
All right.
Are there, are there three members of council who are interested in bringing this back? If there are, so then we have three.
We do need to get that clarified on May 30, 30th.
All right.
While I'm gonna bring it back in the coming of June.
But, I mean, I don't want to belabor the point, but Ms. Galvin is right in regards to it only being two, because if it was three, we talked, we had this discussion before, distinctively, and I remember us discussing, if it was three people, then that would mean you would have all you need for your votes, but it only needed two to put it on the, and I thought it was you that said.
No, there's been many examples where we had to get three. I mean, I can bring up like.
The council's gonna be having discussions about.
We are.
Procedures and policies and protocols at, at its retreat on the 29th, so it may be a good time to clarify that.
That was a great idea.
Cool.
So number four, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, okay.
It's ten, no 10 o'clock break?
Nope, let's just try to crush through this.
Okay, cool, let's go.
Okay, so the proposed conveyance of the portion of Water Street right-of-way for Charlottesville Technology Center at 2:30 West Main Street.
Madam Mayor, members of council.
Good evening. Good evening.
It's been a long day for me. This is a, a public hearing and ordinance for a proposed conveyance of Water Street, a portion of Water Street, a total of 64 square feet of Water Street. This is connected to the Main Street Arena project, or the core building, or Charlottesville Technology Center, whichever name you know it by. The applicant is requesting the 64 square feet as a part of the design of the building. There's a, kind of a, a wall that they have that would, this would straighten out. By having this land, they would be able to straighten out a, a wall that currently has a very slight kind of corner in it. In it, in exchange for the 64 square feet of Water Street right-of-way, they're proposing to donate to the city over 400 square feet of right-of-way further down Water Street, which is another design issue that they're having to deal with, which is the setback of the building is causing kind of a, a stair-step effect as you go down the street. And so by donating that land, they move, move their setback up so it's even with the rest of the wall on Water Street and kind of flattens that out. And that was a comment that the BAR had about the original design of this building, so I think this is something that the BAR would welcome, is, is getting this additional right-of-way and moving that setback. Additionally, there is a temporary construction and grading and access easement tied into this, and that is coming out of some initial discussions with the applicant regarding how to construct this building. So that's the item that you see there. Staff has reviewed this and has no objections, and I'll be happy to take any questions you have.
Brian, related to the temporary construction easement, what is the width of that narrowest point that's outside of the shading area in terms of pedestrian movement?
I'm not exactly sure how much that is. I know that's the, the, the fullest extent, I believe, of that construction easement. I do know we have an app, a representative of the applicant here that may be able to talk to that. One of the very first things we had in discussion with the applicant was the need to maintain ADA accessibility through here. We've had discussions about a temporary ramp on the staircase because the ADA accessibility is down the right side. I say ADA accessibility, it's too steep for ADA accessibility now, so it's, while it is at grade all the way down, this, the, the grade is, is still steeper than desired for ADA accessibility. But there is discussions with the applicant and as a part of this that they would maintain full pedestrian accessibility through this area.
Great, thank you.
And that's a requirement of the city.
Right, well, yeah, we'll have a whole other conversation about that later.
Okay. Any other, all right, open public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak?
Hello. Hello, Mayor Walker, members of council. I'm Valerie Long, here representing the owner and applicant, the owner of the property, Brands Hatch LLC, and the developer, CHS Development. I think you all are familiar with the property, the former ice park. It's proposed to be the, now called the Code Building, Center of Developing Entrepreneurs. Thank you to Mr. Haleska for his good summary of the issue. As he said, we're proposing to exchange a small portion of land from the city in exchange for a much larger piece of land from the owners to balance out the building, make it work better with the setbacks. We have a sort of a triple challenge of a, an irregularly shaped parcel, zero setback lines. And then, just to add more interest to it, we have kind of an irregular-shaped, irregular, some jogs in the property line along Water Street. So in order to try and comply with the zero setbacks, have a building that's straight, and also provide more space for the pedestrian environment by adding the land back, or. or donating the land back to the city along Water Street, we'll be able to have a much larger pedestrian area. The sidewalk in that location is fairly narrow. I do have some photographs, if anyone's interested. I'll also have some slides that I'd be happy to show if anyone wants any specifics. We think it will significantly improve the pedestrian environment in that location. Part of the building is an open gallery space that will lead directly from the mall side through an open courtyard of the building connect to Water Street. So it'll be a very functional and attractive pedestrian corridor. It will almost serve as almost like another parallel street as part of the street grid. Very much open it up. It's going to be open, publicly accessible space. So right on the Water Street side of that open gallery is where the owners are proposing to give land back to the city, which will increase the width of the sidewalk in that location, add more room for some street trees, just generally improve that pedestrian environment on that side and strengthen the connection between the Water Street side and the mall side. So we also, as noted, have a proposed construction easement for access so that they can get the equipment in and actually construct the building on the mall. We've been working... I know the team has been working with Mr. Haleska on a sort of a construction management plan to ensure that public access is maintained. It's indicated the slope on the mall in that location is not currently ADA accessible, so they're not able to create it during the construction. But the hope is that certainly by maintaining it and obviously maintaining pedestrian connections in that location, and that we can all get through the construction, and it'll be a much better environment afterwards, where there'll obviously are discussions about improving the Vinegar Hill Park, that end of the mall as well. So we'd certainly be happy to answer questions. If anyone has any specifics about the proposal, we'd be happy to do it. You may have seen there was a letter from the assessor valuing the value of each of the two parcels. The value of the city parcel is about 6,000, and the value of the parcel proposed to be donated back to the city is over 40,000. So we hope that the council can see the benefit of that in addition to the improved pedestrian space resulting from the project. Thank you. And we also have members of our team here, so if there's any questions that you have for all of us, we're happy to help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Scott Bandi, 1639 Cherry Avenue. Now, did I hear this right? 64 square feet of Water Street? And is this piece on the end where the bus stop is? My concern... I bring up the bus stop, because how's this going to, for lack of better words, affect the efficiency and access of this bus stop? That's all I wanted to bring up.
Thank you. Is the bus stop up further?
It's further up.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, anyone else?
I don't know if Mr. Bandi heard that, though.
The bus stop is up further, so I don't think it's going to be impacted by...
This line adjustment.
Yes. This is what's on my screen.
All right, so it's council discussion.
And the sidewalk expansion, that's something that we already have... That we are already planning to do, or it's just this... Just in case we decide to do it? It'll be there, which one is?
I think... Over. So the applicants would actually improve the sidewalk on the Water Street side as part of the overall project. So it would... You know, they'll construct it, they'll... After they construct the building, they'll clean up that sidewalk edge, and it'll be much wider pedestrian space than it's there now. Let me show you a picture if it helps you. There's a picture looking... You can all see, looking down Water Street from the bus stop. And you can see it's a narrow location there. Looking in the opposite direction towards the bus stop. You can see how close the building is to the sidewalk and to the road. There's a very narrow space there, so it's not as inviting and frankly, not wide enough for... To really have a very convenient pedestrian area. So with the proposed swap of land, you can see the area in red that would be conveyed to the city, and that additional space becomes future sidewalk in that location. And then the gallery space will come right through the mall, from the mall, through the building and open up onto Water Street. So it provides a pedestrian connection right through the middle of the building.
Okay.
I'm happy to make a motion. I move to approve an ordinance authorizing the exchange of a portion of the Water Street Right-of-Way for a parcel of land owned by Brands Hatch LLC on Water Street.
Second.
And I need to make a statement before we go farther. So I consult with council about this. The firm behind Quantitative Investment Management, the principal, which is the founder of the firm that's doing this development, is a past client of my law practice, is not a current client. So I've been advised by council that I don't... I don't believe I'm even covered by the Conflict of Interest Act, because it's not a present client. But I'm just disclosing it just in the excess of disclosure. But I don't have a present conflict, so I'm able to... Or potential conflict, so I'm able to vote on this. I'm planning on voting on it, but I just wanted to disclose that.
Thank you.
There's no vote.
Oh.
Yes, the first. Read it.
Look at you getting it down pat.
I'm getting it. Okay. All right, so now it's a break. Break time.
Great. Okay.